This is something about my journey. Oh, we love that home. You know. We're down. Something's up there. We shall check. Oh, dear Lord. It's that long, long day. Let it go, son. The Lord will share. When to be down. Seven, ten, twelve. Oh, my Lord. It's been awesome. It's our red star. Still in our heart. Here comes our dream. The wedding sun, the wings and bones of freedom. Shall always be. Of our long life. We shall live. Time of God is so deep. And through the cruz. Still on the stairs. Where do we go? Our ones all mine to be. We shall be better. For those who have been denied. There's a lot of trouble. And it's been about the young star. All things to be. It's going on my turn. Oh, God, protect. Us from the death of evil. Guide all the loose. Thanks, let me go astray. Keep on the strength. To his darling, my son. Let us hear our Lord. To the Lord, you can't. Let the rules. To stop with threats or loose ends. To make this sky. Not a low cry, just sad.
Hail be your crown. Oh, the rising sun, we love and dread. We have an anguish for an enemy's. Oh, hail be your crown. God bless your throne. You, we draw. The day to see. Oh, hail be your crown. God bless your throne. We have been much triumphant. From all our foes. Through the crucible unscathed. We passed victorious. Our trumpets sing. The glorious song. Let it sing. Hail be your throne. Oh, hail be your throne. We shall always remember. All that there is. In the struggles for your freedom. Oh, hail our heroes. Our brotherly. Hold in the light. So, oh, hail be your throne. Oh, hail be your throne. So, I'm.
Thank you, thank you. You're all welcome to. When we observe a minute silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra. The time starts now. May the souls of our heroes and heroines. Our baby, women and children. And everyone that have paid the price of Biafra liberation and freedom. Rest in peace. While we continue to fight on to see that we get total liberation and restoration. Of our motherland, you say, you say, you say. Welcome to Dumbago State. And we are here. To see what the Dumbago people have for the Biafran government. Um, Honorable Moderator of the day, over to you, sir. You have been my function. On media server, we can't hear you. My season.
Okay, sorry. I just talking to myself. Item number one, uh, opening prayer. By Ayotuchukwu. Yes. Ayole. Yes, yes, yes. Ayole. Maybe having some difficulty. Adazion. Can you, you know, take over?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Ayotuchukwu, okay.
Talukano. Yeah.
No, no.
One is, it's no more opening prayer by Moa.
Yes, oh, where they said you send there again? You know. Line is questioning me and man now. And what the here, so he takes you over.
Okay, I'm not aware, just, okay, we move. Now to Tomo. Opening prayer. Brachukwakabiamma. Esane, be se arogo. Wakaka masi amasi. Di ken di kerere. Omowakokogono bosi tata. Obosomwa June. Obosin, obosin kizizino ngwadun. Eba wondoto ndeba wondi. Odumegu State, the Bokota. When I am at our acting prime minister. Nibana enai no Dumbago State. Esu nyewa echineka, when I yogo. Ebe no nyena. Kozie menka ege me today. Come me tamporo. Anyway, when I yogo. Eno e pray. Ndisha e, our leader ma zinande kano. Our Prime Minister, Simon Eba. Esu nyewa e no nyene febe nebe fano na. Ba hume, me ko bi siye fike. Ah, ware ware omo Biafra nile. Omo omae, Anje nile. When I hage naka. Anyway, chikwaha, ba ba hume. Ore na yoko agi. Eno nyene omo Biafra, ndine e dende donation. Ndine menka hane, meni je ngoro owa. Anyway, when I yogo, when ekineki, no money shone ina omo Biafra. Yinda kena yosna, chukwakapori me yene. He say, he say, he say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my brother. And, uh. Item number two. Is the opening remark by our Air Bowl. State admin. Mausio Kossisi.
No, please, you should co-host Ossisi Omar, please.
Yeah, co-host him, it seems like, yeah, he co-host him before, it's like, you know, first out. Thank you, yeah, now he's back. As Ossisi Omar, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not hearing anything. Mausisi Omar, are you?
State admin, state admin, where are you for your opening speech?
Yes, there is town there, but, uh. Co-host him again.
Wait, network came out again, wait, he will come back again. Yeah, his network is really bad. Yeah, let's go to the next item before he returns. Before he returns, the network will be fine. Uh, Moderator, check your program and go to the next item.
Okay, next item is presentation of color by Chukwujoke, which is, uh. Deputy Admin Pakistan.
I'm happy to talk to you, man, then I'm going to wait.
Uh. Loud and clear, loud and clear.
Okay. Because. I am an avatar on behalf of Odumegu. State. I am an avatar, our. APM. Acting Prime Minister. And his intarage, his cabinet. You got only one minute, when the match, I mean, this is. This my, you just watch. But I took my camera. Uh, hey. Only. I want to turn my camera upside down, but I think. It's not happening. Okay. You are. Okay, okay. Okay, I'm going to move to later. I put my body. I put my foot.
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh. I'm on a, two people. They were all.
Minister Jare, please, call me on the other device.
Am I coming up to you?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Tomorrow I'm going to watch. Kaija, I'm a avatar, I don't know. On behalf of, uh, Odumegu State. I am not here, when I am a avatar, our APM. Acting Prime Minister. And his cabinet. And the woman I am in the Biafra, Buruburu. Uh, I am. Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, for any of you, you are what project. If any of you, they don't know what you make. Chukwadi kera owa, ete kero owa. On a new view of the Anna Bonana. Oh, did you give them, oh, you are one of the area. Omo de, Odumegu State, you are doing a bunch of getata. When I am a avatar, our APM and his intarage cabinet. And the woman I, Ibo bora Buruburu, omo Biafra. I am a soon and now, and they will know me too. Etetaro owa, I have to carry the no bunch of getata, I just hear your pocket. We are in the chair, our ancestors. Ya pasigendika. Yeah, I yoge amara, I yoge do, I yoge hunaya, I yoge a gamniri. Oh, I just, guys, no bunch of getata. Odumegu, when I, I'm a avatar, omo I. Why I still have the other omo Biafra nina Buruburu, owa. Deputy APM and his cabinet, owa, they can't do no bunch of getata. I am saying, I'm going to do that, no bunch of getata. And who do they do, when I, ya kaya, owa. Etetaro owa, chungu bu nandada, I may can a go, no bunch of getata. She got to do, but then does it. Esayi napoku. Esayi na yo, bo bo na mo denwa, mo denwa, esayi napoku, when I can a go, when I ask you, na. No bunch of getata, geta tara yoji. Ya go zara yoji, no bunch of getata. Oh, I get what I am, Omar. What I am, you do. Eh hunaya, na gamniri, they do to omo Biafra nina. Oh, kacha cha, you don't get freedom, I am there. Oh, no, be. Odumegu State, can I no bunch of getata? Kamara de, zwa e, okay, no bunch of getata. Kamara inkaide, you may he inkaide, no bunch of getata, no do. Oh, where the point do. Etetaro, why I ask you, da, no bunch of getata. Why I talk, you don't, you don't know, you go to do it, but. Oh, I don't know, I need to, omo ada. It's no, it's not, I don't know, I, I don't know, the fire, I got, those, you know. In the fight of freedom, I am a book, no bunch of getata, when I sit, when the data, I yoji. When the data, I yoji, no bunch of getata. Etetaro, why I make it, I do. When I sit, I get. Ya may tell me, bunch of getata. Oh, if you, when we, oh, oh, Biafra is no bunch of getata. Odumegu, no bunch of getata, when you could walk, when it's no Biafra. When I see, I will, I will, I am a stop. Now, who are owa, I get, I don't know, the name, I have. Oh, but freedom. It's a name, you could, oh, I didn't know, I can. I am a, no bunch of getata, eh, they do, but then go, then go, I will be, what, I will go. Oh, the, the, yeah, I go, I can do. I can do, I'm the ego, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the. Eh, they do, they do, then go, I am a, then go. Eh, that's, I will go, can I? Yena esu na, na ta, n'origo, mbwe, mbwe, oku dya nabago, na kwa ya. Na n'origo, mbono pyafra, yedu yeme wo yewa. Eze de gube, dingoz, ay na yedu no baxin ketata. Eda, yeme kwa wo ruguoka, aburu, nte ga jo, na ey bo na mo de kano. Oh, jo, na yeye, na dena dihanya. Oh, wey si ni shoro, nte kwa kara koruwa. Eto wo ruguoka, omu adesta, moleta, waframelesta. Mo ke kwa yenyemwa, yezu bo madu, oh, da, de de na mu. Eda, pata, oh, fi la, oh, dena dihanya, ay na gi ya no pa. Oh, kwa wo, wey kwa tu, kwa disjone. Ni kohosu, na si, na yene, ruha bo ne, ye, ni kana hawu. Eze de gube, dingoz, ay na yedu no baxin ketata. Ya, bah, yeme, chokobemo biyafra, yene, ne, bu bu, ne, bo, ne, bo, ne, yeno. Wey na apanpo, oh, desu, wey de de biyafra, na ma kaide, si yeme wo yewa. Meri ga bu kainye, ye, meri ga di bu kainye, ye. Meri ga bu kainye na po, meri ga bu kainye na. Ah, eh po. Ah, ya na no, n'ukunano, oh, baxin ketata, bu kwa. Meri ka yede, ne, wo, no baxin ketata, wo, yewa chi. Ah, na ma, yede, ye, 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 ng'ende cabinet, yende, injana bambo. Our media, everybody, our APM, ay ne, wote, yene, no baxin ketata. Wey na sige, de de, chokobemo wo ruguoka. Uze no zo, abu na yeye, obu, jogabu, kundu. Yeye, dena, no good news. N'ende cabinet, yene, ne, da, wo yewa news dam. Ama me yeye, wey choa hamu, ni kage, yene, duai. Wey na, watako, yeh, kayna sso. Oh, dena, yewa, yeye, ye, ye, ayunchari, ne, ganakana, na biyafra. Weeze, tezi, na yemo, yene, raya, wey wo freedom, ah, pata freedom. Da, de, na, hasko kabiama, n'ende nu, n'anda. Ishe, 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 ishe. I hope I'm coming, I'm coming clear.
Ishe. Very powerful, ve- very powerful.
Oh, di kana, wey na.
Ishe, ishe.
Na kwa na, yeye, apa, parin, tere.
Ah, amaka, amaka.
Oh, parayi, oh, parayi. Di ko, apa, mo bo ma, ge, chuku, de, koke, koke. Pakistan admin. Eh, na, apa, nda, Odumegu State. Anu, me, gi, nine hundred and nineteen thousand AJ. Plus fifty AJ ma, wey na, waroji. Nine hundred Odumegu State. Wey na, di ko, era, wey na, sige, nonu. Oh, me, biyafra, yene, oka cha, our APM, and his entourage, his cabinet. And my, ay na sune, no, on behalf of Odumegu State. Yete, no, mu, chi neke.
There were, there were my dear brother.
Na kwa na, yeye, yeye, ne, bu, zeba.
God bless you.
There were, there were.
There were, there were, there were.
Um.
Yeah, one and a half, one, I want that for the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ah, I'm a rick, I'm a rick a nest, I'm a rick a ya, you cannot meet yourself.
Good evening, great Biafrans. You people, I welcome everybody. I welcome our APM for the great job that he's doing. I welcome all the brig for all their efforts. I welcome all Biafrans that are here to participate in our fundraising today. Um, Odumegu State is a great state and the people that donated money, I want to bring update from Odumegu State for this event. So, uh, we have Mazzi Chinedum Victor. He paid thirty thousand AJ. We have Odenaka Ibe four thousand AJ. We have Mazzi Ikaychukun fifty thousand AJ. Mada Angoleka five thousand AJ. Mazzi Cipren five thousand AJ. Mazzi Chukue Meka hundred thousand AJ. Uh, hundred thousand AJ for welcoming our APM and the fifty thousand AJ for picking up the kola not. Mazzi HF Na paid thirty thousand AJ and thirty thousand BLT. Pastor Linus paid five thousand AJ. Um, Mazzi, our honorable CRC, Mazzi Imam Madabom paid two hundred AJ, two hundred thousand AJ. Mazzi Ayotuchu paid one hundred and fifty thousand AJ. Mazzi Esze paid fifty AJ ma on the website. So, um, we have a so that people name. Mazzi Chukudjoke fifty thousand AJ for kola not, fifty thousand AJ for welcoming our APM. Mazzi Kelvin fifty thousand AJ for kola not, fifty ta- thirty, I mean thirty thousand AJ for kola not and thirty thousand AJ for APM. So, the total money that we realize for our this event for kola not and welcoming our APM is nine hundred and nineteen thousand AJ. And they won.
Are you, am I coming up?
Loud and clear, and they will. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I, ah, ah, I, hehe.
Adumegu Bueno.
Hey.
Adumegu Bueno. Adumegu Bueno. Ubeje na nike. Ubeje na nike. Ubeje na nike. Ubeje na nike. I ain't no changing me. You have to go, I had a shaky shaky. Oh, that could be danger, oh, god, them ma, and they won.
They were.
They were. Who does that have to have for bros? They were.
They were, one, that one, like, ah.
One, that were. Okay, uh, next, uh, Amaka Allison. Over to you.
I come, I come, I do what I want.
I come, I love the time, just remember. Oh, no, no, me, yeah, me.
They were.
Loud and clear, Oufuma, Oufuma.
Yeah, because pledge can game eh, um, I want you go on the fourth thing. Yeah, Bunnyface, he go on fifteenth, okay? I think no question. Oh, the last of my to the length. So, I mean, I'm a man, yeah, twenty pounds for the um, December state. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, hello. Amen, amen, no.
My God, yeah.
Uh. Yeah? Okay, uh, next is, uh. Okay. Uh, next is.
You have plenty hands, all the hands, you have plenty hands.
Okay, Chief Agonse. I'll meet yourself.
I greet all of us in the name of Chuku Okike Abiyama.
Sir, sir.
I want to welcome over one of us. Because there you are is in the central region, which I am the administrator. I supposed to be giving this chance before now. So, I welcome all of us in central region, uh, uh, Biafranland. I want to thank, salute to, um, APM and his co-intervene. I say a few. God will safeguard and bless you people in the name of Chuku, of, of Kavyama. For the good job and good work that you are doing. We see everything and we know everything. Um, without wasting much time, uh, I supposed to bless the kola. For the fact it has been blessed. I will take the kola with the, on behalf of Olo State with a sum of ten thousand AJ. Thank you and God bless all of us in the name of Chuku Okike Abiyama. He said.
He said, he said. Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hello, Chief Agonse, Olo State.
Yeah, you will make a night, eh, 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 you put those. Don't be, don't be offended, you know, we all, uh, we all learning. We all learning.
Thank you, thank you.
Next time, next time, next time, we'll try to do it better. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, one, then one, I found, you know, never, I, I, I.
Yes, next, okay, next is, uh, Kiruka. I'll meet yourself, please.
Kiruka, I'll meet yourself, please.
Yeah, sorry. I'm a bit occupied. Okay, please, I greet the house. Yeah. Hmm, hmm, uh, Chuku Okike, thank you so much for bringing us together to, we come to support Odumegu State. Okay, I don't have much to say except to thank Chuku Kikabiama for everything so far, for our PM, for our leader. Okay, so I want to support today with, um, hundred AJ ma. Please put it down. I'll pay it and forward the receipt to Mr. Bunnyface, please. Ah, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Coco Akka, ala Coco Akka.
Odumegu Bueno.
Right.
Odumegu Bueno.
Yeah.
Odumegu Kaisweno.
Yeah. Sonny, sonny, play, play that small, that, uh, that music you usually play.
Well, I, I want to, I had a new one.
I know, I know, I know, I know. That is a thank you, thank you message, right? Appreciate your message. Thank you message, thank you message. Oh, you go to next one.
Yeah, continue, go to the next person while we.
Okay, okay, you Frankie. I'll meet yourself.
I ain't can never move. Yes, woman never.
Yeah.
Um, his visit to his lovely state of Odumegu. So, um, my dear, you send me your link so that can make a way I can because that's near where they are. And there's the Odumegu link.
Okay, okay.
So in addition, so fifty, fifty a gemma from him, twenty for cola, thirty for support. So, uh, uh, in addition to Oji, uh, I will also, um, uh, on the, on behalf of Aludo, I use a thirty, uh, a gemma to take a cola note for Aludo. Uh, so that you are our good brothers and neighbors because it's a, amen. So God will continue to bless everyone of you. So, um, I'll post the fifty of eighty a gemma, uh, altogether. Uh, who will I send you to?
Uh, to Angoleka or, or, um, Adion.
Okay, 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 that's all right. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Right, that's okay. Yes.
Okay. Good evening, good morning, good afternoon and good, good evening, everyone. Depending on your time zone. Uh, I welcome all the cabinet members, all our wishers, all protocol observed. Uh, without wasting much time, I am the secretary of Odumegu. My name are Mazi Iketsukun Seve. Yeah. In Odumegu states, great Odumegu states. We have admin, our admin, and also we have our deputy admin and secretary, financial secretary and our P R O stroke media. Also, in Odumegu, we have fifteen counties and five districts each and three wards each districts. And with that wasting time, let me measure the names of the county we have in Odumegu states. The county names are Aguata South, Aguata North, Oko County, Ufuma County, Nkelehi County, Ekusigo South, Ekusigo North, Osumei County, Ochei County, Uli County, Ihiala County, Ebone C County, Opo County, Neewi County, the last but not the least, Okija County. Uh, without wasting time also, I want to just give a small explanation about Odumegu. What we like in Odumegu. But you know, Odumegu have, uh, some special food. In Odumegu states, we have some special food in Odumegu that we call Ofe, Ofe Onubu and Ofe Aura. And also in Odumegu states, we have four market days and each town in Odumegu have different markets that have a K, Ore, Afo, Mkuwa. And each of one of all these markets that each town has, there's a special food that we normally eat on that each market. Something like Abacha. Some, uh, some, some, some part of Biafra land called it Oban or, yes. So each market have a special food they normally eat on each market day. And also we have a culture, we have different, different, if you come to Odumegu states, we have different, different mascots. And in this program, you are going to see one of the mascots, the big, one of the biggest mascots in Biafra land that come from Odumegu called Ajofian Naneewi. Each town in Odumegu have different mascots that, that was known of that town. And also, Odumegu state is a tourist place and a commercial place. Without wasting time, brothers and sisters, I will stop here because if I continue, we're not going to leave today. But let me stop here, I just measure but few. Thank you and God bless every one of us. Amen. Ishe, 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 ishe?
Yeah. Say. Ishe, thank you, my humble secretary. For this short, uh, explanation about Odumegu. Have a lot, you know, if you, if you continue doing that and reading it, I think everybody will stay here till, till that kingdom come. So, uh, include the number, uh, your hand is up. So, unmute yourself.
Thank you, sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Um, Odumegu Kweni, Odumegu Kweni, Odumegu Kuzoni, Odumegu Amaka.
Ademaya.
Um, that don't really know. Because twenty, twenty thousand AJ when you go. Uh, honorable minister for information, yes, I've sent you a receipt of a hundred and fifty thousand AJ. Please, um, I'm still spending on from that money, okay? I've sent the receipt already. Uh huh. Uh, twenty thousand AJ plus, um.
Wait, 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 include the number, it's a fifty thousand AJ.
Fifty thousand AJ, AJ for the first time and this twenty thousand, that is seventy thousand AJ. Now, okay, that's what I already have spent.
AJ, 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 AJ. It's equivalent to dollar, equivalent to dollar. AJ, AJ, AJ. Okay.
Money. Fifty thousand AJ, I will give you, don't worry, the day is coming.
Yes, you go, you go reach that side with time, yes.
I'll give it. You see, I want to correct, I want to show something here, bring something out. When our, uh, first, um, who speak just now called the, the, the name of the counties in Odumegu states, do you know that somebody who said that is from, from, from Elga don't know her local government? Is that not a red flag that the Moron is not from that soil? And I wanted to know that Odumegu states in where my country, where you have Oduku Banka, you have airport and you have wonder river, two rivers that flow together, they don't, they don't accept each other. You know, is found in my country and there are many tourist state, I just want to highlight that. Uh, with this, please permit me, this is all of our traditional song, yeah? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, include the number.
Thank you.
For this explanation, thank you. Good number, thank you very much, thank you very much. Uh, yes, yes, I'm going. Uh, Techno Pop Five Pro, you are next. Unmute yourself. Take the next person, why you wait for Techno Pop? Okay, uh, Steven, why Jesus?
Ah, Odumegu Kweni.
Yeah.
Odumegu Kwazwenu.
Yeah.
Let me do it two times. Uh, I want to thank everybody that is here. The A P M, the information, the administrator of Odumegu and the, the central, uh, region administrator and the Aludo, which is my state. Uh, I just want to say that this is wonderful. But one of the issues is that if you know or wherever you find something good, invite your brother there. We, like what I always talk about is mobilization. Let people know the right channel. When we are talking of, uh, Odumegu state, that's how we will channel all these things. You will see it will be very easy to harness people. By the time you come, making sure that all the counties are represented. They have, uh, then you go to the, uh, hello? Hello?
Right, we are here, we are here, you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
Yes, man, this Stephen, man, this Stephen, please, let's keep it short, short. We don't want to miss any of the hands because some people may be at work, they just want to hop in and then finish. So let's keep it short, short.
I'm taking it straight already. Now, when everything is arranged that way, you will see that we will get to the grassroots. Why I'm saying this is that that's a state that had a meeting, they called me today. And what they are saying is in disparity to what we are doing, but I have corrected that the way I can. But what I want to say is let us go out, reach out to people. If you bring one thousand, I bring one thousand, another person bring one thousand. If we are one million, it is a lot of money. So let us go the rate. God bless you. I will support, I don't know if, uh, my sister Angoleka has announced it, but I have told her because I was having battery problem that I'm going to support Odumegu with the two thousand AJ and let it just, that is what, God bless you. Let us walk and see Biafra actualize. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you very much, as Stephen, as Jesus. Thank you. Your, yes, then, thank you, thank you. Uh, Techno Pop, are you ready to eat the ground running?
Yeah, good evening, Odumegu state, Kweni. Odumegu state, Kwazwenu.
Odumegu state, yeah.
Mama, 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 they will, they will, they will. Uh, this is Mazi Sipred. I don't know what happened to my phone, uh, my name changed to Techno Pop Five. I tried to change it, but it's not changing. Nevertheless, you are all welcome. You are all welcome, you are all welcome, my honorable ministers, you are all welcome. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for coming to grace this wonderful occasion. The Chuku Opikabiamma continue to bless each and every one of us. My honorable A P M, you are looking good, you are looking great. Thank you all, the whole admin of, uh, Odumegu. I thank you for putting this, uh, program, it's wonderful. Honorable minister for information, I thank you. You are welcome. I would love to more, more time. I'm using a three thousand AJ to welcome my A P M. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank, thank you very much, my brother. Uh.
He said how much, how much please, how much?
Three thousand AJ, three thousand AJ.
Three, three thousand AJ. Okay, uh, Mbatuwego. Oh, yeah. Keep, no, unmute yourself.
Yes, uh, cha, 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 Odumegu Kweni.
Yeah.
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 Odumegu Kweni.
Yeah.
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 I seen a, eh, Zuko, Kaeri, I thought one Giga. I had thought to me, I'm gonna go back, yeah, my first time in Bia, Odumegu meeting. On the, obidurunagori today. That I was able to got the, I saw the information from our Ebu Prime Minister, our Ebu Minister of Information. Asa Barawa Prime Minister, he's coming out soon. It was in my dream, it was in my dream to be meeting, but that is story for another day. So when I got the information as I woke up this morning, I was, I was very happy, I probably come in. And when I come in, uh, was when our brother was blessing the Koran, all the notes. So I want to thank everyone, I want to thank, uh, our A P M, welcome, Odumegu state. We are peace, loving people, we are wonderful people, we are accommodating. And, uh, we are hardworking people. When you talk about, uh, Ebonbo, hustling, hustling a lot. When we follow, never, never accept to be on the ground and keep pushing and hustling. We are known for that spirit. So you all are welcome and with the spirit of Opikabiamma not to bless Odumegu state and so many other states, other forty states that is being assisted in the Biafra government. So, uh, in this, at this moment, I use, uh, first of all, twenty a gemma to eighteen twenty a gemma when if you try to A P M Oche, no, I don't know today. Just say I can do, still very, instead of white, yeah, yeah. And there was a thirty a gemma when I were all Oji. Uh, I can send the receipt in a group while on Telegram. Because you see, and you come on them, when you many go by, you may. The battle is not easy and we must know, freedom is not something you buy from supermarkets. It is very expensive and costly, so we must not relent. Airborne, 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 all hail Biafra. Thank you all, my brothers.
Ndewa, hey, Biafra. Thank you very much, my brother.
Thank you very much.
And next, uh, next on the line is Celestin iPhone. Unmute yourself.
Uh, good morning, everyone and, uh, good evening and good afternoon, depending on your location. All protocol observed. I'm supporting, uh, Odumegu state with some of five thousand AJ. Those that we are busy at work, so I don't have much time. I'm supporting Odumegu with five thousand AJ. Thank you all, God bless and protect everyone and guide you all.
Thank you of my brother for this, uh, very short. Oh. Listen, he made, oh, it's so good. Uh, next one is, uh, Ome Pro. I unmute yourself.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone, um, our Ebu A P M. Mazi, okay, Shukur, that's the round of, 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 our Ebu Minister of, um, Communication and, uh, everyone present, I greet you all with the name of, um, our Ebu leader, Odumegu, Oduku. Welcome everyone to our honorable state. Uh, first of all, I would like to, um, thank our dear system, Wanda Angoleka for the wonderful job she's been doing ever since the issue we had from last year November. You know, Odumegu state used to be one of the best performing states when it comes to these Biafra issues, especially as constituted under P M. I could remember, uh, the, one of the last, uh, visit in, uh, Abatobi did. Uh, Odumegu happened to be one of the least prior to his problem. And I remember how we worked tirelessly to make it a memorable one, you know? Uh, nonetheless, uh, before I move on, I would like to remind the previous speaker who mentioned about few things that you could find in Odumegu state. He forgot to mention that, um, Odumegu state also is a home to one of the biggest reserves in terms of, um, natural gas between Ihiala and Uli boundary. Odumegu state holds the, one of the biggest natural, you can go do your research. When it comes to natural gas, you can find it in Odumegu state. And then, um, about someone who mentioned about counties, uh, in terms of integrating everyone together. Remember the issue where we are coming from, the truth is, what happened really caused a lot of problems. And, uh, it's a process where we have to gradually integrate many people because what I can tell you and I want you to, I'm stating it as a fact, that so many people were monetized during the, this whole process. So not everyone is doing what they are doing with their own right conscience. Some of them have eaten money and they are in a situation where, but they know the truth, but they cannot go, go, they can, it's, it's too late for them to accept the truth now. So it's a process where we have to gradually rebuild their trust and then be able to integrate them into what we are doing now. Okay, so, um, uh, about how, you know, just a second, um. Okay, I don't want to go further, I would like to support today's program with some of twenty thousand naira. For the beginning, it's my first time getting to, you know, integrate into, I was one of those who are a bit confused in the initial stage. You know, but then as time goes on, like I usually, I used to communicate very well with, uh, Adadi Oramma. As time goes on, I begin to, you know, um, try to look at things from different perspective and what has been going on because I'm someone who really wants to work with facts and not just gossips. So from incident that are going on, people buy resources to, um, defend their land instead of what is actually needed and the rest of it, it's obvious that we are not dealing with someone who is honest about her actions. I would also like to refer her as an individual. So from me, from here, welcome everyone to Odumegu state, we really hope to make it great again, thank you.
Thank you very much, God bless you, my brother.
Mazi, please, uh, you say how much, you said? How much, uh, Mazi that just spoke, please, how much you said?
Twenty thousand.
He, he made the. Hold on, hold on, I'm asking him, how much you said? Mazi that just spoke. Can you, can you hear me?
Twenty, twenty thousand, uh, naira. I don't want to make mistake with the AJ and the gemma.
Are you say, are you a Biafra or you a Nigeria?
I am a Biafra, of course.
All right, what is naira? Do we have naira in Biafra land?
Okay, I use the naira just to avoid, you know, making pledges, uh, that, uh, you know, imagine saying twenty thousand AJ.
Monaco, what is Biafra Monaco?
AJ, which is equivalent to dollar, right?
Hold on, stop there. If you're a Biafra, whatever you're doing, identify yourself as a Biafra. And you have to pay fine for this. I believe we have our task commission from Odumegu, so you, you all know how to handle this. Okay, please, we are Biafrans, proudly one, we are not Nigeria. So anything associated with Nigeria, please, uh, we know, we try the best we can to disassociate ourselves. Thank you.
All right, I think, um, I'll glad, I'll gladly pay the fine and, uh, I hope not to repeat the mistake again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, O, Odumegu Pro. Uh, in case of necessary, don't do mistake. If you don't do, if you don't have a gemma, you say a J. Uh, two zero, so if you're, you know, or you ask question. Thank you for realizing the mistake and, uh, coming back. Really appreciate it. So next online is, uh, include the number, your hand is up again. Unmute yourself.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Odumegu Kweni, Odumegu Kweni, Odumegu Kweni, Odumegu Kwazwenu, Odumegu Amaka.
After you, I should be.
Ongue. Uh, I'm not mad, I'm a bit more, more. A P M, I'm, I'm hardly, I don't like to, I, I, I'm not good at giving people air collect, but A P M, I'm, I just want to say. Ongue, no, me can see, me oh. That can, oh, you may be, in fact, you are too good, I'm telling you. You like you judge in ten thousand AJ, we are not support, whenever, A P M, Kukita. A P M, it very, very, I'm telling you, we appreciate you, Kukika Abiamma for having the. I'm telling you, Prime Minister, I will be proud of you, uh, Le Malika, Biafrans are proud of you. Um, my brother that just spoke, you know, I myself here, I know something, I know where it is, but I will not review it for Zoo to go there. In that land, you see everywhere, even everybody here, this is process. Okay, what you said, I didn't know it, but I don't want to. You say it, okay? I know a place that I discovered something that I know is very, very important, but only Biafa will know it, not, not Zoo. Okay, that is why we don't need to measure certain things, okay? Thank you so much, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, include the number, thank you for this, your, uh, advice. I'm really, I really appreciate it, thank you, thank you. Uh, Nenaya Okereki, over to you. Unmute yourself.
Good evening, great Biafrans, all protocol observed. I'm supporting today's event with fifty a gemma. Uh, I want to ask, Mazi, honorable Sonia Barawa, do I send the receipt to you or do I send it to Wada Angoleka?
Send it to Angoleka for their records, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for this, your shot.
Thank you, Nukwada, thank you. Ndewa. Owa, one dot, one dot, one dot, Ndewa.
Okay.
I, I, I'm not from Odumegu, better be friend, I will madialand your Dume.
I'm one day I'm awake, one day I'm awake.
Of course.
Eh, no, but not Dume will be fun, ah?
No, 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 no. No, I know I'm not Dume, but I, I will madiala Dume, I'm a more madiala, not so many.
Okay. Okay. One day I'm awake, no.
Ah, yeah.
No, 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 one day.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Victor also. Unmute yourself.
Nah, eh, Kene Kwebo, nah, eh, Kene Kwebo, no. Nah, Odugo, Odugo, K, Odugo, Odugo, Oga AJ, no, Kasi, no, nah. Ndewa, Dume, I can't make it, no. Uh, never, uh, without wasting much of our time, only one night, what came, no, there, nah. Because I said, I will not, uh, out of ninety-nine, out of hundred sheep, oh, my kufu. Kwenywa, I enjoy, happy, for, got trouble, for, happy, happy, see ninety-nine. Because that ninety-nine, he ship, I can't hold. So so, can I have this, confuse, you take a, a way, we end with a way, our A P M, a way. Eh, Bobo, no, no, and, and my sick, no, large, come back with your genuine hearts. Everyone I drop, I go with you, large kind of back, oh. Because of that joy and happiness, I made twenty thousand AJ, I support you, Odumegu state. And, uh, welcome, uh, A P M and each and every one of us, Nalunorini, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Mazi Victor also. Exactly, we will. Thank you very much, Mazie Victor Ansho, exactly, we are, we are keeping our arms up, waiting for them to come and join us. Thank you very much. Uh, Angoleka, your hand is up, Oyan, do your thing.
Yeah, um, they won't know, um, Chukukika Biamma. Um, in support of what Chukun Ansho said, this our brother, Chukwe Meka is his name. He was a vibrant comrade in old Odumegu State. You know, for this, all this wild as problem, we keep in touch, many of them, I keep in touch with many of them. Many of them, we can do argument, argument, then I will try to let the people know the reality that is facing us. So I was surprised when he sent me a message that, because I sent, I sent this, our jingle to him privately, many of them. He now replied that he will be there, so later he now asked me to, to add him in the platform, the number he brought, I tried to add him. The number is not going, I still sending the message. So when this occasion rise, I send him the link and he replied to me that he will come. You know, he explained very well, because I normally scream them so that I will know who come to investigate what we are doing. But this time around, whether they want to come and investigate or not, we have passed them, we have passed that level. So I am welcome him with the sum of five thousand AJ for today because he really, 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 really tell me his mind, that then he was confused. And what is going on here now, for us of today, he makes sure that the place he followed before was a mistake to him. Now he now realizes mistakes, so please let us welcome him with our elbow hand, he's a nice person. Thank you very much, they won.
They were my dear sister, thank you very much, exactly, I don't know, it's really good that he realized that where he's going, there's no road. That's, you know. And I, I was, I bought it, thank you very much, we all should encourage him to keep it. So, uh, more hands, more hands, more hands. Okay, uh, Soni. Mazie Soni. Go ahead, go ahead, you have hand up.
Okay, 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 just, just wait, I quote the numbers, hand is up, so let's, let's take it. I wanted to go on, take.
Biko, please don't be offended, my fellow Biafrans and Odumeguans, that I am, you, I'm in my home and our A P M visited us, so don't be offended that I will be leaving you for that reason, I want to use twenty thousand AJ M A. Sorry, twenty thousand AJ, to, you know, to give our A P M water when he will making his speech, because I won't be here when his speech will be going, going on, so totally everything is hundred thousand AJ. And if my minister, I sent you hundred fifty thousand AJ, fifty thousand is a normal pledge, everything is there, I sent you the receipt already. Please permit, forgive me that I will be leaving now, you come to my place, I'm leaving there, it's imperative, okay? So thank you so much for what you are doing, I appreciate you for everything you are doing. And my fellow youth of Odumegu, please, always ask question and don't make decision while you emotional, please, this is my advice to you. Ask question before you subscribe to anything and ask for evidence, thank you so much, thank you, unquote the number.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll take item number six. Weapon our A P M with Ben, Soni, over to you. Thank you, thank you very much. Before, Odumegu Pro, your hand is up. Okay, amute yourself, let's.
Okay, I want to thank Wanda Ngoreka for supporting my return with some of five thousand AJ. I really appreciate, and I also want to make some correction that I'm not here to do any investigation on behalf of anyone. Um, I only think that you can hide the truth for, for a long time and the time has actually come whereby you are either in or you are out. You know, so I only want to correct that impression and I also want to add to my previous pledge, including the, the, the fight from our Ebu A P M. So I wanna make it the extra ten thousand AJ, making it the total of thirty thousand AJ, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thanks for your assistance. Now, A P M, you're highly welcome, now the stages. Okay, they will, just one second. Okay, fellow Biafrans, I hope I'm coming on. We know what today is. And two days ago, we celebrate our hero and heroines. Thank you all, and before we proceed, I want all of us to know the state we visit today, where we have in our Tarho meeting. Please, if you can join me, if it is possible for you, please stand up wherever you are. We have what we call Orga Ndiorga, master and master of all masters, boss and boss of all bosses. Sometimes in life, a lot of us challenge those that we are not capable of doing what they are doing. Or those, or whoever that is above us. That is why even the devil challenge God. That is why a lot of people don't know who is above them. People challenge who they are supposed to challenge. And before we proceed, we know we have our God Almighty, Chukukika Biamma and the angels. And in human being capacity, we know we have those above us, all fingers are not equal. In our own time, in our own generation, in Biafran history, we know our record, we know our history. But our enemy trying to hide our history away from us, they trying to erase our history. Please, fellow Biafran, stand up while this honorable minister of information, please, can you play the video I sent to you, then after that, I will proceed before my speech, thank you. Honorable Minister of Information, play the second video, thanks.
Is that alright? Now, we're going to get this word to the end, is that alright? Now, make sure that this time you're moving, that you're moving in the right direction.
Thank you very much. We all know who this Orga Ndiorga is. If you're a Biafran, if you don't know, ask question. Look closely, you will see where is stated Odumegu. This hero is called Orga Nde Orga, boss of bosses. If you're a Biafran and you from Odumewu State, and you from any state, 40 states of Biafran, please be proud of being a Biafran and be proud that we have Orga Nde Orga, master of all masters, boss of all bosses. Please, you can now sit down, thank you. Thank you, fellow Biafrans. We need to know our history. You are all welcome today, to today's Tar Ho meeting. As we have recognized the boss of all bosses in Biafran, the great man, Odumewu Ojukun, who opened our eyes, who set the record straight for us to know what freedom is all about. We appreciate him, we ever be grateful. We remember our leader, Mazin Namdikan, following his footsteps under the Orga Nde Orga, under the master of masters. We also remember our Prime Minister, who is following the lead under the Orga Nde Orga, under the master of all masters. As far as Biafran history is concerned, you cannot erase it, it's not a rock and science. It don't matter what you do. And we also remember the heroes and heroines, all those we cannot mention their name as well. And we also remember you that is participating in today's program and our fellow Biafrans. And I received some list of our Biafrans that are locked up in the Nigerian terrorist country of which we are working to secure their release. We remember all of them. And a few from especially Odumewu State of Orga Nde Orga, State of Master of Masters. If you don't make some noise, if you don't let your voice be heard, we'll ask you questions. We'll ask you, are you not proud to come from Odumewu State? Are you not proud of the general of all generals? Didn't he make you proud? Nde Odumewu, Biafrans, I'm asking this question. Among who's told so that against our enemy, so they won't kill us all? If the master of all masters apart, apart from Tukokabi Amandie, if he did not open our eyes to educate us, to let us fight for our freedom, by now, our land would have been Fulanized, Islamized, it could have chased us all out. The European empire of all evil, they have proportion, a portion for themselves. That is our resources. They wanna take our resources and let the Fulanis, the Nigerian terrorists, have the land. My fellow citizens of Odumewu, I asked this question yesterday during our recognition and diplomacy fundraising. I asked this question. If they chase you from Odumewu State, Kerebe Gaga, where will you go? If these Fulani and the Nigerian terrorists succeed, chase us out of Biafran land, my people, where will you go? Going to Abazonia, those are the, Abazonia people will not let you. They don't have enough land, they don't have enough space for themselves. Will you be running from Benito Lagos? They will hurt you with passion. Now, talk less of them. They will treat you worse than slave. Will you be running to Middle Belt? From where go on, from the same go on that kill over 5 million Biafrans? Where will you go? We are grateful to Orga Nde Orga, the undisputable leader of Biafran. We salute him, we appreciate him, we thank him. We appreciate those that are doing what we are not able to do, that encourage them to do more. We don't wanna drag those that are fighting for us, contributing immensely. We don't wanna drag them down. Our people said, my fellow people of Odumewu State, I want you all to be proud of Odumewu. I want you all to be proud of the history. They have tried everything to erase our history, but we will resurrect it. Either our history allowed to be uncovered, we will teach our children, our grand grandchildren about Odumewu State. Why this state is named Odumewu? And who is that Odumewu? Orga Nde Orga, boss of all bosses, Ikemba One. As of today, sorry to disappoint my fellow citizens of Odumewu State, he, he is not Ikemba One of Unewi anymore. He is Ikemba One of Biafran land. Sorry, if you keep saying Ikemba One of Unewi from today, you are making mistake. He is Orga Nde Orga, masters of all masters, boss of all bosses. Ikemba One of Biafran land. Whether you like it or you don't like it, that is your own cup of tea. We appreciate his sacrifice, we appreciate him. We still celebrating our hero, our heroines, it's not over yet. Our leader Mazin Namdikan, thank you for all you're doing. Few days ago, you won at the court and the proceeding is still ongoing. Our Prime Minister, under the Orga Nde Orga, is still making history. The first Prime Minister of Biafran Republic government in Eza that ever been in the EU Court to answer question about Biafran, to talk about Biafran, to deliver, to take that message to the world. The same EU that have been running from talking about Biafran. Now they will be talking about Biafran even tomorrow and will prevail. Biafran must win. Biafran must not surrender. My fellow citizens, there is not going back. Those are the guanas. There is no road with going back, no way. We are moving forward, we are marching forward. Even during the genocide civil war that Nigerian terrorist enemy country waged against us, with the little we have, our armies are still marching joyfully, singing joyous song. How we still win? Biafran did not surrender to Nigeria. No victor, no vanquished. What happened is because of the blockade, because of children being starved to death every day. We will not surrender our land, will not surrender anything to this evil empire called Nigeria, to EU. You know, EU should be ashamed of themselves. For real, they, they should be ashamed of themselves. Their evil will catch upon, upon them. While they are trying to stop us, Russia will, from the other way, try to deal with them. What goes around comes around. Thank you, my fellow Biafrans. If you haven't know who you are, ask question. If you haven't know who you are, go to your family, call your children, ask question. 140 years ago, what are we called? 150 years ago, what are we called? Who are we as a people? Who is Eric? Who is God? How do we get here? Where are we from? Who is our God? What is our way of life? Do your research to know who you are. If you are not doing that, you're making a very, very big mistake. And if you're not supporting the freedom of your people, let me ask you this question. What will you gain? If you allow your people to be killed, massacred, raped, chased out of their land, what will you benefit or profit from doing that? Our leader Mazin Namdikan, after our Lord Jesus Christ and His station, because I'm a Christian, so I always talk about our Lord Jesus Christ, sorry. If you're not a Christian, but in Biafran land, Christianity is allowed, so let me do that. After our Lord Jesus Christ station, in Biafran history, when you talk about teaching, is our leader Mazin Namdikan. Just the same way we have Orga Nde Orga that have stood in forefront and fought battle. You will see him with his uniform, he do everything humanly possible to make it work. He even uses fattas wet. Why some of us today, why we say we do this financially, we contributed, we say we use our money? Some Biafrans don't like to hear that, some are angry about it. Sorry if you offended, if you offended by that, kindly bring your own. We'll wash your plate for you, we'll do everything for you, we worship you, respect you for us to get our freedom. We applaud you, we even kneel down for you, even kiss your ass if that's what you want. Please appreciate those that are making sacrifice for us. Appreciate them from the bottom of your heart, just the same way we appreciate Orga Nde Orga, the Ikemba One of Biafran land. And we also appreciate our great teacher of Biafran land Mazin Namdikan. We have, we have a great teacher who exposed the Nigerian atrocity to the whole world and the entire Biafran. We have now his undisputable, the great teacher, exposé of Biafran land. And what about our Prime Minister? Our Prime Minister is one that spend hours and hours every day exposing the Nigerian evil art, analyzing everything that is happening in Nigeria. A lot of Biafrans today that have came in to join this struggle. Do you know why? Let me whisper to your ear, is because of the exposition of our Prime Minister. His exposition that he spent 2-3 hours every day, educate a lot of Biafrans to the extent that any day, he did not come online to broadcast. Biafrans keep asking question, if he's okay or not. Till now, I bunde chiring tike that we can hear. Till now, are we deaf? After everything we have been taught, the lesson of the war and we saw how Biafrans are killed and massacred, we did not learn for what happened there? Our leader Mazin Namdikan, preach, 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 and he said, he is tired of preaching. And it's time for action. Our Prime Minister exposed the Nigerian terrorist state over a whole top for years. Are we deaf and dumb, my people? There is no kind of preaching, are we preaching that our leader Mazin Namdikan will have not? He is under the Orga Nde Orga undisputed. There is no kind of exposition, exposé. I'm going to expose from social media using what is happening in Nigeria, analyzing it to the public, that our Prime Minister have not done. He is still in the, under the Orga Nde Orga. These three great leaders are undisputable for now. And for those that are financially supporting, you are undisputable as well. And those that are doing everything they can in their own capacity, you are swell on your own level undisputable, under the Orga Nde Orga, under the masters. And for our angels that is protecting Biafran, all of you are still under masters of all masters and undisputable. We appreciate you, the admins, the reps, the de facto government and the brigadi are still under the Orga Nde Orga, under the boss of all boss. All of you are still undisputable. But don't quote me wrong, when I say undisputable, I'm talking about the genuine sub one, there's some. The good ones are the undisputable. The good ones are the one we celebrate 2 days ago. The hero, the heroines. The evil ones, we don't know who you are. The evil ones are in our black book. We don't open our black book, it's too dark that you can't even see what is inside. Put your name in the good book, so we celebrate you. So we'll put you in your rightful place. Our Tukokabi Amandie, the one in heaven said, Jesus Christ said at my right hand side, right? Be in the right side of Biafran history, not in the dark side. Because it won't be well with you to be in the dark side or in the black book. My fellow Biafrans, I don't know where to start and where to end. There's a lot to talk about, we can spend hours talking. Our leader Mazin Namdikan, the greatest teacher have done that. Our Prime Minister, the exposé of all exposition, have exposed and exposed the zoo. Is that not enough for us to wake up? Is that not enough for us to realize when our leader Mazin Namdikan said, the zoo terrorists, they are coming. They are all over our bushes, they are coming. The Fulanis are coming, they try to overrun and take over our land. How far, how is it today? Are they not in Biafran land? Are they not in Biafran land, my people? What is happening in Yamufu today? Did Yamufu just wake up one? Did Yamufu just wake up one day and they decide to run out of their house? No. Why are they running out of their house? Because the terrorists, Fulani jihadis, bloodsucking demons in the name of Islamization are chasing our people out of their accessory land. If they don't run for their dear life, they would be herded, kill them, rape them, destroy their farms. And some of you, when we people like me, our leader Mazin Namdekanu, our Prime Minister, and the brigade media and the way meaningful Biafrans are speaking, preaching, you all be laughing at us. Say share. Let's be rest assured, we will overcome. For all the mockery, assault that we have received, that will not stop what we are doing. Sometimes make us stronger, tougher, wiser. But this journey that we have embarked on, not going back, no matter of threat, no amount of threat from the enemy camp, from the enemy within, from the EU, from any organization, body, country which stop us. Because we Biafrans must be free as a people. We Biafrans must protect our children, our mothers, our land. Whoa. This journey might be tough and rough. It is tough. It is rough. But are we going to give up? Can never. Our leader Mazin Namdekanu was kidnapped from Kenya for over four years now. He did not give up. He is still fighting. Salute. Still fighting. Appearing in the court of our enemy with one fin, the called fini cloth. He never said he quit like was Ricky. He is still fighting. Our Prime Minister Mazie Samunebu is called for so-called questioning since November, since month. He never gave up. He never surrendered. There is one of our mother during the Biafran Nigerian war, the genocide war. She was lamenting in that video that Biafran must manage as a nation. Biafran will never surrender. Thank you, mommy. Thank you, man. We did not surrender. We not. My fellow Biafrans, it's time we know as a freedom fighting people, as people that are fighting for their survival, we must not be political correct. We must agree to disagree. And our language might not be as smooth, might not be like a normal government that have million, billion, trillions, that have over one thousand armored tank, thousands of jet fighter, Marines and others. But we don't. We are angry. We are fighting like a lion. We'll fight with whatever we have and the way we speak. We speak and say at ease. We speak with the anger and the frustration of what our people going through. We have to voice it out. Can't be quiet. If you're offended by that, go do your research. Listen to those that have fought before us all over the world. Freedom fighters have the language, how they speak it. I don't know if this is familiar with you, my fellow citizens of Biafran and Odumegu. Your freedom is not given. When you remember that voice from Doc Shaw Yoba? Is that with a normal voice or a loud voice? Your freedom is not given. Your freedom is taken. You take your freedom and you will liberate your land from neighborhood to neighborhood, village to village, town to town. We will fight. We will fight like never before. And remember the country that we are liberating ourselves from is the most dangerous and worst country on earth, Nigeria. No country in the world want to do business with Nigeria. Whenever I'm in Washington, you talk about Nigeria, they will tell you how corrupt it is. I don't know if some of us Biafrans are familiar, but who say that Nigeria is fantastically corrupt? The dead man Bohari, the imposter, before, before he passed away to his rotting grave. In UK, when he visit another dead corrupt Queen of England, Bohari said while he was walking to take off from UK, they have a discussion. Uh, one of the, uh, I don't know if it's the Queen or one of somebody from one of the, from the parliament. They said Nigeria is corrupt and Bohari admitted. Actually, Bohari said Nigeria is fantastically corrupt. How I wish Honorable Minister of Information can actually play that short clip for us. For a president of a country to admit that the country he rule over, he govern is corrupt. Aaron Boy, Peter Obi, the useless man, Sogo, that have betray his people. Peter Obi made it clear that Nigeria breed criminals. United States of America don't breed criminals. Nigeria breed criminals. If you're not part of this freedom fighting, if you're not fighting to free your people, do you rather fight and work with a country that breed criminals? Do you want to work with a country that is fantastically corrupt? I have a conversation with one of Honorable from the homeland today. And he told me about how much he spend every day to swell his generator so he can have light upward, light never. Nigeria have no electricity. Nigeria electricity cannot serve you for a whole food day. Sometime the light they gave you is half current. Can't even power a refrigerator. Is that a country you want to be proud of? Is that a country you still want to associate yourself with? Nigeria have no good road, no electricity, no good hospital, no good school system. Everything in Nigeria is a shithole. Do you remember a president that said Africa is a shithole? He is referring to Nigeria. During the hearing, when Nigeria, when during the hearing in Capitol Hill, they designated Nigeria as a country of particular concern or country that persecute Christians. One of the speaker there made it clear that he have visited Nigeria numerous or numbers of time. That Nigeria have the worst road also, worst road on earth. That Nigeria have the worst road on earth. And they call the country a giant of Africa. And for your one Nigeria, you should be ashamed of yourself. If you have traveled out of that country with a Nigerian green and white passport, you see how embarrassing, how shameful it is. People with the passport try to hide it. Because Nigeria is a scam country, a terrorist country. My fellow people of Odumegu, please, we need to remember Ogandioga. Remember his sacrifice. Remember everything he have done for us. And the reason why he fought, so we should live. So we can live and let live. If you have not been supporting and if you are a Biafran, let's make today occasion a memorable one. Let know that we visit the state of Ogandioga. Let know that he who show us the light is Ogandioga, the Ikemba one of Biafran. His Excellency Odumegu Ojukwu. We appreciate him. We appreciate his sacrifice and all of our sacrifice. Our Prime Minister this week, he will be appearing in court again. The hearings still continue. The good news is that we are winning. All our enemy we scatter, but at the end, Biafran will be free. And I also want to remind Biafrans, I have a lot of list of Biafrans that the Nigerian terrorists are holding. We are doing everything we can to get them out. And we also need to secure fund to release them. Please, we need your support. I'm not going to show you the list here, but it's a lot of them. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that our people free. But we are in the homeland today and the homeland thank you all for your supporting and what you all have been doing to support our angels, to be able to carry on the work of freeing our people so we can be a free nation. Please, my people of Odumegu, you're supposed to be proud of yourself. Celebrate today. Celebrate him who make the state possible, Odumegu. Please, support, support, support. And for Biafrans all over the world, both in homeland, please, let's kindly support this great state of Odumegu. And remember, our freedom is not negotiable. As Obama said, Nigerian unity is not negotiable. Our freedom, Mr. Obama, you fail woefully. Our freedom is not negotiable. I always keep reminding America for the few parts of my broadcast. America, wake up. Stop sleeping. Time for game is over. As the leader of the free world, we love you all. Step up and do the right thing. United States of America that is led by His Excellency President J. Donald Trump, you know what to do. American Congress know what to do. We have led our campaign to them. Very soon we'll be going in a more diplomatically harsh way to wake them from their sleep. Because while they are sleeping, China is taking over part of Africa. Terrorists, they are advancing. We will not let that happen. America, step up and do the right thing and stop this your political correctness game. Step up, wake up. The leader of the free world, we call you upon you again. It's time you do the right thing. The leader of the free world, we know what Biafrans have gone through. If I will have show some pictures, members of Congress that I have have visit with, just let me just show one here. We have take our message to many of United States Congress. Starting from here, it's a lot of pictures, but I'll just show three. This is Speaker of the House. Still the current Speaker of the House. And we are appreciating, you know what is going on? Uh, Jim Jordan, Judiciary Committee. Cruz, Senator Cruz here. So please, it's a lot of meeting that we have met with members of the US Congress and senators. So they know what is going on. So they cannot act like dumb and deaf and dumb like they not don't know what is going on. Time for America to do what is right. Biafrans believe through America, our leader Mazin Namdekanu, that we believe. That means if you believe in what he said, he believed that America will deliver. His Excellency, our Prime Minister also believe that America will deliver. Uh, let me just show like just two more picture, then I'll be wrapping up my speech, please. I met with our... If United States of America, if they say they don't know who we are, they are joking, they are lying. US, we call upon you all. You all know our story, our history. She is a former presidential candidate. And when they invite us for our president in America here for his inauguration, Amy Glomisham actually has signature is in that invitation. And the former president as well, Cory Booker. Cory Booker told me that the evils are everywhere. They know our history. America, do the right thing. Step up, stop the game, do what is right. You all know Biafran story. You all know Biafran people have been killed and massacred. But it's the right time to stop the political correctness game and do what is right as the leader of the free world. When I met with the Speaker of the House, the Speaker of the House made it clear. When US lead, the rest of the world will follow. So please, we don't want you all to turn your back on us. We believe you all will do the right thing. And my fellow Biafrans, while we are waiting for United States of America and other countries, not just America, to come and recognize us, we also need to fund what we are doing. We need money so we can use that AJ Gemma for our diplomatic war and the recognition. Recognition costs money because we have to pay our lobby. We have to pay those that are working paving the way for us, negotiating so that we can get to this greatest high. Thank you, my fellow people of Biafran. Thanks for all you're doing. And thank you, my fellow citizens from Odumegu State, from the state of Ogandioga, from the state of the boss of our bosses, from the state of Ikemba one of Biafran, not Ndewe. So that Ndewe would take that from there. He is Ikemba one of Biafran. Thank you all from here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my APM. It's a wonderful speech you made there. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Please, more hand to support our APM speech. Let it run, let it run. Yeah, be New York. Amute yourself.
Biafrans Ndewana.
Ndewa.
Nde Odumegu. Ndewana. I thank you guys for hosting our APM. And I really like this speech from our APM. So I will take thirty AJ Gemma to support that speech. Ndewana. I will send my receipt to Information Minister to deliver to the appropriate person for me. Ndewana.
Ndeu, Ndeu, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Let it run, let it run. EN, amute yourself. With the... Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the APM for his speech and I want to thank him for all that he is doing for Biafrans. I have made a payment of 50 AJ. Thank you, APM.
Thank you, Ndeu.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. More hands, more hands, more hands. Let's support our APM in this wonderful speech. Yeah, Odubo P. Pro, oh yeah.
Okay, I am supporting our Honorable APM with the sum of 20,000 AJ, making it the total of 50 for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ndeu.
Uh, Ma Tungwa, oh yeah, do your thing, amute yourself.
Okay. Odumegu, Ndeu Odewu. Odumegu State, Ndeu Odewu.
Ndeu.
I'm on the head.
Yes, 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 loud and clear, loud and clear.
Okay, okay. Uh, I greet you all, I thank you all for hosting our APM. Thank you all. Everybody, all day, I thank all they don't know, and everybody I thank. I thank you all. This struggle was continuing. Please, I beg everybody, any amount, take, any amount is not, it's not to be long term, please, any amount. We need to continue this struggle. We need to, we need more funds. We need more funds. I will support this town hall meeting, 10,000 AJ. So I will forward my receipt to our finance director of my state, for my state. Thank you.
Ndeu.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Uh, no, because free state, free state, you can anyway.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm from a rural state, I'm sorry, I'm from a rural state.
Okay, Ndeu.
Yeah, thank you, Amaleka, for that information. You tried to get the information, thank you. Ikichikoya, over to you.
Okay, thank you, my brother. Without wasting time, I'm using 20,000 AJ to welcome our APM for the speech. Also, I'm using 10,000 AJ to welcome Mazzi Sunny Akbarawa to Odumegu State. Pastor Van 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 Ajere, I'm using 10,000 to welcome Van 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 to Odumegu. Ma Tang Rika, I'm using 10,000 AJ to appreciate her for all her job, good job that she's doing in Odumegu State. Thank you and God bless. That is total of 50,000 AJ. The first 50,000 AJ has been paid. I'm going to pay this one now. Thank you and God bless. I still remain Odumegu State Secretary.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ndeu.
Thank you, my APM Secretary. Thank you, you're doing a nice job, thank you. Mighty Dot, you are next, amute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right, thank you, greetings all, greetings, APM. Greetings, Owo. Um, greetings all Biafrans that are here. Um, yeah, Owo Sunny, what happened? I was hearing something about, they keep telling you welcome back. What really happened? Is everything okay? Is Sunny there?
Sunny, yeah, yeah, Sunny, that's a question for you. Yes, Sunny Akbarawa, Sunny Akbarawa, that's a special question for you.
Anyway, hello?
We can hear you, please.
We are hearing you, we are hearing you.
Um, when you have time, you can respond. Well, yeah, thank you, Odumegu, Odumegu State, again, for doing the need for today. Um, I thank everyone that have contributed. Um, I wanted to say something. Many of us do not understand what is actually happening. Many Biafrans, 80% of Biafrans don't even understand the times that we are in, what this freedom is all about, the danger that we are in. They think it's all about Fulani. Fulani is a small piece of the puzzle. As I speak to you right now, European Union, Britain left European Union to, because of whatever. But for the fact that Britain wants to come back to Europe, have alliance with European Union after pulling out, they are planned, right now, they are having alliance to form a military, European Union military with Britain. These people are coming again to Africa for second time colonization. But this time around, it's going to be through brutal force. Because without Africa, they will beg for food on the streets of Europe. Africa has always been their survival and they can never let that go without the fight. That is why many of us don't understand the magnitude of the shit that we are in. So Fulani is just a piece of the puzzle, a small piece. We have a great danger ahead of us. Apart from that, there is something coming that many of us do not even understand. And I would rather be in Biafra than to be in the United States of America when that thing start happening. I'm not going to say much. But if many of us understand the depth of the shit that we are in, what is coming, Biafra will be your best bet for what is coming. You are in Europe, you are in America, you are in Asia. The best place for you to be safe for what is coming is Biafra. Very soon, many of us will begin to see the manifestation of what I'm talking about. But today, I'm going to, since you are in Odumegu, the man, the man that started this path, this journey, the Ikemba, I am going to call upon his spirit. I'm going to call upon his spirit. And I'm going to make this the grammar, I'm a god for... If Finland, if European Union, all those countries in Europe, that have converged and gathered together to persecute one man that is fighting for the freedom of his people. If Finland and European Union, if they ever, if they did not fight, if they did not fight to free themselves from Russia, from their enemies, to get their freedom, those countries, if they did not fight to free, if they didn't do what Mazzi Simon Epa did and what we are doing now, it will be well with them, whatever they do to Simon Epa. It will be well with them. But if they fought, if they fought Russia, a brutal fight to gain their freedom, and if he does the same thing that Simon Epa is doing and they are persecuting him for that, I am going to send a message to Finland on my own. And I am calling the spirit of Odumegu Ojukwu to go and fight for Simon Epa. They are persecuting his son in a foreign, faraway land for doing what he did when he was alive. Every soul that died because of Biafra, they will all converge to Europe. And European Union will face destruction that is so magnitude that the world has never seen. You don't have to believe me. But something is going to happen soon. I'm going to support this today with 150,000 AJ. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mighty Dot.
Thank you very much, Mighty Dot.
Thank you very much. I know we are, we are, we are lying to this, you know. We shouldn't be too much emotional because, you know, things are getting really, really, really scared. You know, you said it all. If we all, if we all, you know, saying everything, I don't think this town hall meeting will end today. So thank you very much. Let's just keep it, you know, short and simple. A minute, just do it, you know. Thank you, thank you very much. More hands, more hands, more hands. Uh, Sunny? Is Sunny still here? Sunny, you hear me?
Ahaha, pe nuwa tu bo bo lulu.
Ahwa tu digo.
Ahaha, ahaha, pe niye li go.
Ahha, liye li go.
Okwe wwe, but you can nope do.
Obo da ju lo i.
Pe niwe kan.
Niwe kan ko noye go.
Niwe kan.
Niwe kan ko noye go.
Niwe amama.
Niwe amama noye go.
Ado do 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 man. Ado do 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 man. Ado bu de bu de bo.
Bu de bo man bu do.
Na aso, we bu aso du nu ma. Ne kwe lu, ne kwe banke, me lu ngoku takajuto.
Mawalu moji.
Ya bu bu si li ke rin.
Mawalu moji.
Banu bu zinkaka, e di alaya.
Mawalu moji.
Nu be bu gara, malu bidu, malu bidu.
Mawalu moji.
Asino, hala kata ka, na gazi.
Mawalu moji.
O nyu wa, e nyu ma u.
Mawalu moji.
O nyamua ra di le, na na mulia.
Mawalu moji.
Ya nan ko to fiya bu wa ne.
Mawalu moji.
Anu fe bu dena ka, na za ku.
Mawalu moji.
Manajara, wa kenu.
Mawalu moji.
Uzo a fiya ibu dena, no bu kon to.
Mawalu moji.
Eda mbavi, na gasi ya zu.
Mawalu moji.
Oga ni ruwa, ro ma ka, o nyu enko lofu bi.
Mawalu moji.
O nyu i gara ba da, o nyu ruwa bo.
Mawalu moji.
Ya ju ne ju e me, me alonalu e ben tu pa.
Mawalu moji.
Odi onu e bu odi sa.
Mawalu moji.
Abacha le, kwa ga fe lo du du ke.
Mawalu moji.
Ofu ludika, ka ri vo ka lu.
Mawalu moji.
O nyu menwa fu toku, kompo la fu.
Mawalu moji.
O nyu ya si no bu ma ka, na do di.
Mawalu moji.
Eba mani fa fu, no cha galu pa.
Mawalu moji.
Boji li onu le cha, o we li le sa lu.
Mawalu moji.
Ofu ne fi fi e we la ba ni me galu pa.
Mawalu moji.
Onu e fu na lu, no na ja ibugu.
Mawalu moji.
Ma i ku ku bi o tu nyu, no no bu me le.
Mawalu moji.
Ucho ba ko ndo je, bu je ba ni ha wa.
Mawalu moji.
Ana so ko ndo je, bu e ti ma u.
Mawalu moji.
Mbe mbe, ngana ngana.
Mawalu moji.
Mbe mbe, bu be bu la ke.
Mawalu moji.
Mane we la, jo mu, odi si a nyoko.
Mawalu moji.
Asu anu ka, bu li dun ti e chiye.
Mawalu moji.
Isin e bu gi, di o wa ko ta la fu.
Mawalu moji.
To wa ke na 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 wa ke du nu bi.
Mawalu moji.
Du nu bu lu na wa ke ne li nu de.
Mawalu moji.
Akaka ta bo, ku lu ke diya ma di ke.
Mawalu moji.
Ado kan pu ne do ni pe le me le.
Mawalu moji.
Ebi li tu cha na ru bu mo ju li ke.
Mawalu moji.
Opo chi ndi ke, ji li ke.
Mawalu moji.
Nan ta chi o bi nyi nyi bu je aga nu bu.
Mawalu moji.
Oga ni da ko da bu ju na ma bu ba.
Mawalu moji.
So ko sa ru mi li o gu gu, ya ya la la.
Mawalu moji.
Oko na bu ito lu go.
Mawalu moji.
Olu bo gezi na zu.
Mawalu moji.
Kamalo ne de we fu i wope do.
Mawalu moji.
Ofu nu ka, ga leka ku i fo bu ni si.
Mawalu moji.
Ago wa lu no be, go ta na macho lu.
Mawalu moji.
Ole je li bo so so ti fo ji biwa.
Mawalu moji.
Ago oka ta bu nyu, yu wa ni ne.
Mawalu moji.
Anya tonga ndu lu na ba ke de.
Mawalu moji.
Ajo na chula ka la ka ne.
Mawalu moji.
Si na bu ta fu je le no di ke nu.
Mawalu moji.
Owa ko li cha nyava, bu je bu ye.
Mawalu moji.
Mo li e bu ju, nyana ya we le na ba.
Mawalu moji.
Na ya go to ne do ne nu.
Mawalu moji.
Asu ni fe na ju ju ra ju ti fe.
Mawalu moji.
De ba manare bu afi ma ka.
Mawalu moji.
Asin e bu kata ide, oka fu bu nuwa.
Mawalu moji.
Ka fiya chalu i lo, no ya balaji.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ebo si biwa de nu.
Ka chalu i lo.
Si ebo si na we bu nu, oso ko je ali bu.
Ka chalu i lo.
Si epe nu benka bu la le le na ba mu.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ipe di che du ni ruwa, e no no bu.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ado lo da lo nu, no u diya na ku ba liya.
Ka chalu i lo.
Oku ko je, je ko na ocha.
Ka chalu i lo.
Anu wa ke ya ba nu, no no lu.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ako ku ko do na kata.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ama ke wa ke na mu ye.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ana ma angola nu bu.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ama fa ya mu ze ni ru.
Ka chalu i lo.
O nyu nyamaladu, ni che ni che.
Ka chalu i lo.
Nyu e ma angu bu, nyu bu bu lu diya la.
Ka chalu i lo.
One ma wa ba to bi nyue ke.
Ka chalu i lo.
Oye ka lu diya sa ba ko nu wa na.
Ka chalu i lo.
Da ju juana, diya je nu ju le we.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ko de na, be ge be lu ndaninu.
Ka chalu i lo.
Omo ma tu be, me ko tu be, bu ju ku ikel banne, we di ku bu, abu du bu, ni talu bu se.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ne ga le wa nyanu ya ma.
Ka chalu i lo.
Chi te ni ju ba lu kuwa nu no mu me.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ofu lu go du ma ta ko bu.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ya bu se arana, ka na oka je bu ye.
Ka chalu i lo.
Ako na ya je, bo si li bi teka.
Ka chalu i lo. Ebo si li bi teka, ka chalu i lo.
Ese se wa ka na ru.
Ka chalu i lo. Ebo si li bi teka, ka chalu i lo.
Di bu nu, na ba to diya nu be.
Ka chalu i lo. Ebo si li bi teka, ka chalu i lo.
Ebe ke ni ma ro nyene tu ga fa.
Ka chalu i lo. Ebo si li bi teka, ka chalu i lo.
Guo fe ka ma ro chi nka ta.
Ka chalu i lo. Ebo si li bi teka, ka chalu i lo.
Ebe na li liya, ba nope di be.
Ka chalu i lo. Ebo si li bi teka, ka chalu i lo.
Owo la ju go, ba lu na kata di, ka chalu i lo.
Yeah, thank you very much, Sunny, for this. So this is Ajoffia, Ajoffia Neewu, one of, one of most strongest masquerades in Biafraland. More hands, more hands, more hands. Okay, Abigail, oh yeah, you are next.
Thank you. Greetings to Odumegu State. Greetings, APM. Good evening from Texas. The entire honorable members, good evening. Texas is supporting the Odomegu State with fifty AJMA today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There one.
Thank you very much.
There were, why are they together? There were.
More hands. Donation continues. Let it run, let it run, let it run. Yeah, Abigail, your hand is up again.
I want to know, yeah, I, I want to know who, I want to know who I'm going to send the receipts to.
Uh, you can send it to Adazion, Angaleka. Anyone, anyone, uh, you just choose.
All right.
There were.
Thank you.
Okay, Elki USA, not a salt. Mazee. MLK, yes, got it right. Oh yeah.
Yeah, there were, there was, sir.
There were.
There were. Then I'm, I'm, I'm most tempted to speak in English, but let me go back to English. I greet all the honorables and I greet my APM. I also salute our eternal leader and, um, and my, uh, General Effion, who is, who is the president of Biafra, who was the president of Biafra. I also remember our leader currently battling the Zoom. And I pray that the Almighty will continue to give him the resources he needs, the wisdom that he needs and understanding, knowledge that he needs to overcome them. I also say the same prayer for Prime Minister, uh, Mazze Simon Eba, who is also going through his own persecution. And at this time, this is a time we all need to really gel and come together and make an impact. And in support of that, uh, coming together, I will, I am uh, welcoming APM, same time honoring the people of Mayegu State with some of one hundred and fifty AJMA. There one. And I will send the receipt, I will send the receipt. There was, I will send the receipt to, uh, did, did, did you say, uh?
Adazion.
Adazion. Okay, that'll work. Okay. There were.
There were. Thank, thank you very much, Emileka.
There were.
God bless you.
We are highly appreciated. Thank you.
There were.
More hands, more hands, more hands. Let us do our internal leader proud by doing the needful. Okay, Angaleka, Angaleka, your hand is up. Oh yeah.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I'm see here and we have one update. Mazze Chibogo is donating ten thousand AJ for today's fundraising. There one.
There were. There were, Mazze Chibogo.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's keep it, let's keep it going. Keep it run. Eyes look at me. More hands, more hands, more hands. Mazze Sonny. Okay, 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 don't worry. I, Engineer Nani is up. Oh yeah, omit yourself.
Okay, there one. I'm good evening all. Sorry, I've been watching and had a very, very important call from somebody and a bit disorganized with what is going on with this fundraising as well. But as it is, I'm, I'm supporting with, I'm supporting PM, APM for being here and asking for fund for us to, um, push for, for the, um, recognition of Biafra. I'm supporting him both for the caller and being here with fifty AJMA. There were.
There were. There were, there were, Engineer Nani. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Uh, somebody with Zoom user. Uh. Omit yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, loud and clear.
Oh. Odomegu, when?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Odomegu, where's when?
Yeah.
Galu no, Odomegu State. I'm a supporter with twenty thousand AJ. When I'm a supporter, my APM, Woke Maramakawai, with ten thousand AJ for his wonderful speech. So, total of thirty thousand AJ. And there on the Odomegu. Here now, what we no, we nihe, what ke ye ri be, go ngaji dere. Makambosin, de nu bu state, ti ga hapta. Go nu biwa.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And thank you so much. In EK.
There were. There were, there are. From Odomegu State, there were.
From Oha.
Um, uh, Okuma, okay, you know we have to send the receipt. Okay. Um.
Angaleka man.
Angaleka, Angaleka, oh yeah.
Oh, hiya. No, she's spending money from her higher now.
Okay, okay, sorry, sorry.
It's website.
Uh, I thought it's, okay, website, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, so we need only the receipt.
Yeah, so send the receipt, tell that through Adazion or Angaleka. Okay.
They are to Chini. Then Chini ga Mazze.
Yes, yes. I have to warn them. No problem, no problem.
Gunniro.
Okay.
There were, there were, thank you.
There were.
You're welcome.
You may not. More hands, more hands, more hands. Let's just make it sharp, sharp, so that APM can, can relax. He's getting, you know, in Europe, he's getting late and, uh, okay, love God. Omit yourself, you're honest. Love God, oh yeah. My sister, over to you. Omit yourself. We are now here in Ender.
Omit, omit, sir.
Yeah, I think I've done that. She needs to omit herself.
If she's not. So.
Omit yourself, you know, we need every, every penny we can get. My sister, omit yourself.
Okay, uh, I think we can move on. We have one item number, we have number ten, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Right.
There's, uh, you know, if there is any, it might be ten, but if there's, uh, um, there's more hands or because we need every penny in this, uh, tonight, so if there is no more hand and, I don't know, next thing we should be ten. So if, uh, I don't know, um, I will be closing remarks by our this. But if love God is, I don't know, what's happening? I've tried to. She have a problem with connection. Okay. This noise getting late, um. Mazze Sissioma.
Yeah, please tell Van 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 to co-host Mazze Sissioma, please.
Okay.
Okay, or you can, you can just give him mic, can give him mic. Yeah, Moses, Sissioma.
Yes.
Thank you, Mo.
Please, before, before, before you take the closing remark, take the half first.
Yes, yes, wait, you know, we have a problem with love God, you know, to omit herself, I don't know, but Abigail's hand is up. If, uh, love God, if you can omit yourself, you do it. If not, Abigail will go, okay.
Okay, yeah, I just have another update from Texas family. Is that family is supporting Odomegu additional with additional thirty-five AJMA. So, you will be getting a receipt of eighty-five AJMA from Texas family. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, love God, is it possible you omit yourself? I don't know. He's not going. Okay, Sissioma, you can take over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, our moderator, Mazze Effion. Appreciate everyone who have endeavored to participate in this town hall meeting. It is with great pleasure that we thank everyone in, in that we thank everyone who has support in one way or the other for the progress of this town hall meeting. I know most of us have left one or two behind just to see that, uh, this, uh, event is a success. I appreciate our CLC chairman in this town hall meeting has done so, so, so much well in trying to make sure that this event is a success. I appreciate, uh, every executive and committee member of Odomegu State, Brish APM, Information Minister and his deputy, all the Brish cabinet members. I want to use this opportunity also and recognize and also appreciate our regional administrators and Biafra entirely. We are so grateful having you all today. Me shuku kike abiyama. Continue to guide, protect and bless, and bless you all in all your endeavors. You say, you say, you say. There one.
There were. There were.
There were.
There were. There were, sir.
My ass said, thank you very much, thank you very much. You're doing a very nice job. Uh, there was update, uh, love God, she was not able to omit herself, so I got in touch with her. She's, uh, giving fifty AJMA to support, to support this town hall meeting. So. Angaleka, jotting down.
From, yeah, love God, from P State.
Uh, from UK.
UK.
Okay.
Thank you, um, Mazze, do I have the mic? Before you take the closing prayers.
Yes, 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 you can have the mic and take the closing or closing prayer should be, let's hand over to Angaleka to that.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mazze, thank you. The admins of all United States of Biafra, four states and all the entire executives and all the reps and admins of BRGIA. Our ministers in BRGIA. Our APM. Our PM. Our leaders that have been at the front before now. It came by one of Biafra. Our supreme leader. And was Ricky and everyone that have paid the price. Even our Biafra defense forces in the homeland were sacrificing on daily basis for Biafra to be fully liberated. Biafrans in the homeland, for all your sacrifices, salute all of you. Yes, if you have seen that your state have not made a name in the homeland, then go back and play the puzzle well. Go back